Regular meeting number 59 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem.
We have Pastor Marshall Taylor here. Pastor Taylor, if you'd come forward to the podium and lead us in prayer, sir.
Thank you. Would all bow their heads. Father in heaven, we come before you right now. We thank you for this great day that you have made. For this is the day that you have made, and we will be grateful and be glad in it. And so, Father, we are so thankful that we have the opportunity today to just take a pause out of this day, just to say thank you. Thank you for what you have done for us. Thank you for all of the successes in our lives. Thank you for helping us to overcome every adversity that we face in our lives. And so, Father, most of all, we just thank you too also for activity in our limbs. Because if it had not been for you on our side, where would we be? And so, today, holy Father, we come before your holy throne, and we ask you that we find favor in your sight. And Father, we ask, Lord, that today, as the city council comes together to meet, to make important decisions for the welfare of our city, for the success of our city, Father, we ask that you find favor upon the decisions. We ask that you help them to come to conclusions and decisions that will help our city to be prosperous. And so, Father, we believe you right now. We believe that you are there, and we know that you're going to lead and guide us into the right direction. So bless this meeting, that it will be smooth, without any issues or problems that we can't overcome. And we'll be careful to give you the glory, the praise, and the honor, both now and forevermore. In Jesus' name we pray, in God's name, amen.
Craig Harden, Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal?
So move.
Say her second. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Harden, Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. This week's communications received by the City Clerk's Office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the City Bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
No, at this time.
Thank you. I'm going to take things a little out of order, because I believe Councilmember Tyson has some special guests that are here with us tonight, so I'll turn things over to her to start things off.
Thank you, President Ginther, and I am excited that we say that there's going to be a great partnership between Franklin County and the City of Columbus. And I am going to ask Commissioner O'Grady to come to the podium. And I have Resolution Number 0205X-2014. And this resolution is to recognize the partnership between the City of Columbus and Franklin County in the development of a food action plan. Whereas food is a basic human need, and all residents of Columbus and Franklin County should have access to nutritious and affordable food. And whereas there are communities in Columbus and Franklin County with limited food availability... Whereas the food sector is critical to the economy of Columbus and Franklin County, and a strong local system of food production and processing, distribution, storage, access, and reuse protects our natural resources and contributes significantly to the environment and to the economic well-being of the region. And whereas the Columbus City Council and the Franklin County Board of Commissioners recognize that as a part of its health and sustainability mission, we have a vital role in ensuring that the regional food system is robust and equitable. And whereas the Franklin County Board of Commissioners recognize that as a part... I'm sorry. Whereas the Franklin County Board of Commissioners approved Resolution Number 0809-13 on October 22 of 2013, solidifying Franklin County's commitment to a strong and resilient food -local food -system. And whereas the City of Columbus and the City Council have shown strong support for public health and local food initiatives through the support of Community Gardens, the Mid-Ohio Food Hub, and other important food access programs. Whereas there is currently no plan addressing the needs of the local food system for the City of Columbus and Franklin County. So now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus, that this council does hereby agree that Columbus Public Health, the Franklin County Commissioners, and the Franklin County Economic Development and Planning Department shall jointly undertake a planning effort to develop a local food action plan. Columbus Public Health and the Franklin County Economic Development and Planning Department each agrees to assign a representative to act as the project lead for their respective agencies, and each party further agrees to collaborate and to work in good faith to carry out the task needed to complete the planning effort and develop a local food plan. And I move for passage.
Craig Harden, Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Grady. It's great to be in this partnership with you. I know we kicked it off this morning, and the podium is yours to talk about your commitment and this great relationship.
Well, thank you. It's good evening. It's great to be here tonight, talk about this unique opportunity to present this resolution for your... the one you just considered and passed. President Ginther, thank you. Councilwoman Tyson and council members, thank you for allowing me a few minutes. I apologize for my scraggly appearance. It is Men's Health Month after all, and this is No Shave November, and I have a family member who is ailing, and so, in his honor, I decided to let my beard grow. I have a feeling that on December 1st, if I don't shave my beard, my wife will do it for me. But... So I apologize for my appearance. As you know, a strong local food system makes our community more resilient. My colleagues and I will consider a companion resolution to councils tomorrow morning, and with the approval of both bodies, we can begin developing a plan, a clear strategy for strengthening our local food system. Franklin County continues to support programs that increase the availability, affordability, and access to healthy foods. Supporting the local food system has now become a part of our workforce strategy, our economic development strategy, our community-building strategy, our public health strategy, our anti-poverty strategy. It really touches either directly or indirectly every aspect of the work we do as commissioners. I'm pleased to be able to offer my support this evening for the development of a city-county food action plan for our entire Franklin County community. This plan will provide a clear strategy for strengthening our local food system. Together, Franklin County and Columbus have already launched several initiatives, including support for community gardening, food businesses thriving after startup support from ECDI, corner stores now selling healthy food, the SNAP program administered by the County Job and Family Services Department, and most recently, a dollar-for-dollar match at farmers' markets last summer for our SNAP recipients. It's clear supporting local foods is more than just a trend in our community. It has become a priority area of our residents in both city council and the commissioners, one that produces positive results. I look forward to engaging with Councilwoman Tyson and her team at council, along with Dr. Long and Columbus Public Health Local Matters, as well as our local suburbs and community partners, as we convene and coordinate community stakeholders from producers to consumers to create a roadmap, a coordinated community strategy around this work going forward. With the approval of this council and my fellow commissioners, this work can begin among county staff and the Department of Economic Development and Planning and your staff here at Columbus Public Health. I would like to also acknowledge the folks at... Jim Schimmer, our Director of Economic Development and Planning, and his staff, Matt Brown, who's our project lead. They've done a huge amount of work. Jim's been a big support, and Matt does a phenomenal job for us and has been working on this for some time now. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, and I'm glad to know that you've already approved it, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And again, this is the first step, and there'll be some legislation later today that will provide the funding to move on the Columbus portion forward. I also want to recognize that we have... we've already received testimony from Commissioner Paula Brooks, and she is the Ohio's member on the bipartisan White House Task Force on Climate Preparedness and Resilience, and she's a Franklin County, Ohio Commissioner, and she's a Chair of the International Economic Development Task Force Vice Chair, of the Resilient Government Board Vice Chair, Environment, Energy, and Land Use of the National Association of Counties. And so she is in support of the Columbus City Council Resolution 2020205X of 2014 to recognize this partnership between the City of Columbus and the Franklin County in the development of food action plan. And again, as Commissioner O'Grady just mentioned, tomorrow I will go to the County Commissioner meeting and accept this resolution to bind our partnership. So I'm excited, and we'll hear more about the food plan when the rest of our speakers come up on the rest of the legislation. So with that, thank you, Commissioner O'Grady.
Thank you.
It's been an honor to work with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman.
Don't walk away.
I forgot.
Yes, I do. Thank you very much, President Ginther. I'd like to, first of all, mention that the Mayor, Michael B. Coleman, and Columbus City Council invite you to celebrate the holiday season with the grand illumination of the Scioto Mile, where you can enjoy holiday activities, traditional carols, a stunning light show, and special appearance by Santa Claus in the spirit of giving. You can support the Emter Bowes Project by purchasing a piece of handcrafted pottery and receive a bowl of hearty chicken and dumpling soup, compliments of the milestone 229. All proceeds will benefit the Mid-Ohio Food Bank. The date is Friday, December 5th, and the activities will commence at 5:00 PM. The lighting ceremony will commence at 6:00. Director McKnight, comments relative to this event.
Chairman Craig, President Ginther, members of council, I think you covered it very well. I just encourage everyone to come out, enjoy the festivities. It's always a lot of fun, and we look forward to seeing all of you there that evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director. And then, finally, the National Guard Reserve Units for the Ebola Fight identified. The Army has identified 15 National Guard and Reserve Units from around the United States to deploy early next year in support of the fight to end a record Ebola outbreak in West Africa. President Barack Obama in October authorized involuntary activation of Reserve Units for Operation United Assistance. On Thursday, Secretary of Defense Chuck Hagel signed an order authorizing the deployment of about 2,100 Army National Guard and Army Reserve Soldiers to Africa to replace the deployed troops. The 34th Infantry Division Headquarters, Minneapolis, Minnesota, Army National Guard will replace the 101st Airborne Division Headquarters, which is now running the operation. Among the deployed units that will be mobilized is the 16th Engineering Brigade Headquarters in the Ohio National Guards and B Company, the 412th Civil Affairs Battalion in Columbus. So I wanted to personally thank our military men and women for their selfless and courageous commitment to service, certainly to address this serious crisis, certainly not only in our nation but around our world. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. Councilmember Harden? Councilmember Klein?
Council President, I'd just like to recognize Linda Logan and the efforts of her team in securing the Women's Final Four to the City of Columbus in 2018. I see that she's in the audience, so congratulations, Linda, and the work of your team. It's a big win for the city, about $20 million in economic impact. We're going to have tens of thousands of visitors to town in 2018, and just for everyone who's asking, I will not be refereeing the games.
That must have been part of the deal, Linda. It is huge news, and congratulations to you and your team, and thanks to Councilmember Klein and the mayor and others who worked so hard on that. It's a game changer for the city. And now, it's on to even bigger and better things, so I know we've got it in our sights. President Proton Mills? Councilmember Paley? Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you, President Ginther. Just to make an announcement regarding the hearings next week, and we will have the third quarter hearing for 2014 will be next Tuesday, December 2nd, at 5:00 in council chambers, and then at... and Director Kousky will give that overview of the third quarter at 5:00. And then, at 5:30, we will have the hearing on the mayor's budget proposal, and I think all the directors or their designees will be present to be able to give us an overview of their 2015 general operating fund budget, as well as... Auditor Dorian will also make a presentation during that hearing. And so, to the listening public, please come down to council December 2nd and just to learn more about our 2015 budget at 5:00, 2014 budget at 5:00, and 2015 budget at 5:30. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Any comments from our elected officials? City auditor? City attorney? There any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk?
So.
Clerk call the roll.
Craig Harden, Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance Committee Ordinance 2709-2014, Public Service and Transportation Committee Ordinance 2671-2014, Public Utilities Committee Ordinance is 2455, 2519, 2536, 2539, 2553, and 2619-2014. Technology Committee Ordinance is 2587 and 2607-2014. Development Committee Ordinance is 2189, 2710-2014. Rules and Reference Committee Ordinance 2612-2014.
Thank you. The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Finance Committee Ordinance is 2597, 2640, 2668, 2716, 2720, 2721-2014. Health and Human Services Committee Resolution 188X-2014, and ordinances 2605 and 2659-2014. Recreation and Parks Committee Ordinance is 2559, 2576, 2596, 2699, and 2712-2014. Public Service and Transportation Committee Ordinance is 2561, 2578, 2655, 2676, 2678-2014. Public Utilities Committee Ordinance is 2388, 2448, 2541, 2589-2014. Technology Committee Ordinance is 2483, 2533, 2540, 2548-2014. Development Committee Ordinance is 2629, 2630, 2631, 2636, 2650, 2666, 2673, 2674, and 2708-2014. Also, appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0219, 220, 221, 222, 223, 224, 225, 226, 227, 228, 229, 230, 231, 232, and 233-2014.
Thank you, Clerk Blevins. We do have one speaker on the consent agenda this evening, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, welcome to council chambers. If you'd come forward to the podium, share your name, address, any organizations you represent. And you have signed up to speak on 2629-2014?
16th Rowland Avenue, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins, determined solid vacant investment property in North Linden area. I just want more clarification, what's going to happen with 2983 Cleveland Avenue. I know it's going to be used for a side dispensing for a yard, or in that case, you know. It's unfortunately that we have to move things like further along ahead for any side dispensal, but I'd just like to understand, with that property owner can hold a high standard of taking care of a side dispensing for his yard. Again, I'm all for it, but again, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Any questions or comments for Mr. Wilkins? Director Shoney, any additional information you'd like to share regarding 2629, or if not, would you follow up with Mr. Wilkins, you or your team, to answer any questions he has?
Thank you, President Ginther. I don't have any additional information at this time, but we'll follow up.
Thank you, Director. Any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? If not, may I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions?
So move.
Say her second. Clerk call the roll by voice.
Craig?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Mills?
Yes, with the exception of 2541-2014, on which I am abstaining.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
President Ginther.
Yes, consent agenda carries. We'll now proceed with the second reading of 30-day table on the emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. Madam Chair, floor is yours.
Thank you. The first ordinance is 2591-2014, and first I move to take from the table.
Craig Harden, Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
And also, I move to request to amend to 30-day legislation.
Craig Harden, Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Oh, I'm going to make a voice vote. My voice. Yeah. Okay. Let's just do it all over with my voice vote. Yeah, let's just do it all over.
Craig?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Mills?
Yes.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Ginther.
Thank you. First, I move to ordinance number 2591-2014. I move to take from the table and call a voice vote.
Craig?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Mills?
Yes.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Ginther.
Yes.
And I meant to move to amend to 30-day legislation and call for a voice vote.
Craig?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Mills?
Yes.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Ginther.
Yes.
Thank you. Now, I move to authorize the Director of the Department of Finance and Management to enter to a lease agreement with the Reed Avenue Center as the master tenant, and to allow for the rental of office and educational space to the nonprofit 501(c)(3) entities, and to manage the day-to-day operation of the building that is city-owned, real property identified as 280 Reed Avenue, and to declare an emergency. Again, this... we will be the landlord for this building, and of course, Reed Avenue Center will be the master tenant. And the Reed Avenue Center's vision is to create pathways to prosperity and prospective tenants and their services, which will be important, and to executing that vision include the Boys and Girls Club of Columbus, Co-WIC, Connect Ohio, Goodwill Columbus, and the American Red Cross, also the South Side Learning and Development Center. The Mid-Ohio Food Bank will collaborate with the Community Development for All People, St. Stephen's Community House, and lastly, the City of Columbus Pride Center. And I would move for passage and call for a voice vote.
Craig?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Mills?
Yes.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Ginther.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2715-2014. It's to authorize the Finance and Management Director to expend monies for labor, materials, equipment, standard services, and professional services in conjunction with a boiler replacement at the Beacon Building, and to authorize expenditure of $300,000 from the Construction Management Capital Improvement Fund to weigh the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus C Code of 1959, and to declare an emergency. The... an original boiler is at the Beacon Building, and it's approaching 60 years old and is close to reaching the end of its useful life. This specific unit is part of a three-boiler heating system for the building. The unit is still functioning, however, due to its age and increasingly deteriorated condition, it is likely that the unit would fail soon. And based upon that, it will take us 12 to 15 weeks to be able to get a new boiler. And so, based on that, we will... that's one way we are asking to weigh the competitive bidding so that we can get the boiler, and we... and then the other is that there is a... maybe an opportunity, is once we get our new boiler, that we may have... may be eligible for an energy rebate grant for up to $50,000. So with that, so we can make sure that we keep all of our employees and the citizens that utilize that building, want to make sure they're warm through the winter months should something happen to that building and we need a boiler for that building. I move for passage.
Craig Harden, Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. If I could now move to Health and Human Services?
Please.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2462-2014, and I'm going to ask some of the speakers to just to walk towards the front of the room. I'm going to ask Autumn, you're going to be speaking for the Columbus Public Health, Autumn Tribetta, to come to the front of the office, and I'm also going to ask for Michelle Moskowitz-Brown to come to the front of the... to the podium also. This ordinance, 2462-2014, is to authorize the transfer of $88,170 of appropriation authority within the Emergency Human Service Fund, to authorize and direct the transfer of $88,170 from the Emergency Human Service Fund to the Health Special Revenue Fund, to authorize the appropriation and transfer of $50,000 from the Neighborhood Initiatives Fund and to the Health Special Revenue Fund, and to authorize and direct the appropriation of $138,170 to the Health Department and the Health Special Revenue Fund for a food action plan. Revenue Fund for a food action plan, to authorize the Board of Health to enter into a contract in the amount of eighty-eight thousand one hundred and seventy dollars of Local Matters for the implementation of a food plan and to declare an emergency. Earlier in the year, this was one of the amendments that I submitted and my council members accepted, and, and so we're so excited, as we heard earlier, from the partnership with Commissioner O'Grady, that we want to create a food plan that is like no other. There are a number of other cities that have food plans, Seattle, New York, and Santa Fe. However, most of them don't have the component that has the city and county relationship, and so that will be key with this initiative. Also, there's four primary objectives to our plan, and it will take about eighteen, sixteen to eighteen months for completion because we want to do a really thorough job of working with all the entities that are right now very much involved in the food action plan work. And the four primary objectives of our plan would be improving access to nutritious, affordable food and education about healthy food. And the second is increasing the role of locally grown food in economic development. The third will be preventing food-related waste, and lastly, facilitating coordination and communication among existing food resources and agencies. And so, it will be a comprehensive strategies, and we'll move our city forward. And our partners in doing this would be the Columbus Public Health, of course, and, as you know, representing us on our side and the Department of Economic Development from the county. But the other agency that will be working through Columbus Public Health is Local Matters. And so, with that, I'm going to let Autumn and come to the podium, who represents Columbus Public Health and very active in this, in the food plan consortium of our city. So, Autumn, the floor is yours.
Councilmember Tyson, President Ginther, and members of council, my name's Autumn Trumbetta. I'm the Director of Chronic Disease Prevention at Columbus Public Health, and on behalf of Columbus Public Health, I'd like to thank you for your leadership and understanding on the important role that access to local healthy food has on the myriad of health and quality of life issues in our community. We look forward to working with partners across the community, especially Local Matters in Franklin County, who you have also charged with this as well on the Columbus Franklin County Local Food Action Plan. We look forward to it, and thank you very much.
Michelle.
Good evening. Thank you, Councilwoman Tyson, President Ginther, and councilmembers. So, I have a short speech for you. So, what is this plan and why does it matter? It's an honor for Local Matters to participate in the creation of a food action plan with the county and the Health Department and the city. Local Matters is bringing expertise in food planning, community engagement, and a track record of successfully collaborating with organizations across the city and beyond. At Local Matters, we believe that everyone should be able to access affordable and healthy food, and our work is aimed at preventing diet-related diseases and alleviating food insecurity by ensuring that people have the skills, the resources, and the confidence to eat well. Over a year ago, in conversations with Councilwoman Tyson and Commissioner O'Grady, Local Matters began to lay the groundwork for a food action plan. We started in a neighborhood or two, just getting a, a planning process going that identifies where people can get food, where they grow it, and how we can learn about healthful food, as well as where there are gaps and opportunities. We learned in our initial findings, of course, that there are a number of existing resources that would benefit from coordination and that people want better food options in their neighborhoods. We'll expand on our research to move into more areas, and we'll work with the city and county and many other stakeholders to create lasting solutions to improve our food system. We'll look at how and where food is grown, processed, distributed, sold, how people get to food, and how we can prevent food waste. Each of these points in the system has economic potential that would benefit from a planning process. Today, food is to neighborhood stability what the Sears or the Arts only were in the past. Food is a necessity and is also an economic driver and an anchor in neighborhoods. Chicago has a great example of how cities can incorporate food in their planning process. Recently, a major grocer moved into a site of a former Sears Roebuck on the south side of Chicago. Nearby Growing Home, which is an amazing job training program for reentry populations, is housed at an urban farm that will be able to further scale up and provide produce to the grocer. Columbus can make that happen, but we're going to need a plan, and we're going to need to work side-by-side with everyone who is at stake in the future of food in central Ohio. The efforts that we kick off today are going to improve the quality of our health, our economy, and our communities, and we are so grateful for the opportunity to be a part of that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Michelle. Any questions or comments? I also want to thank Kelly Arthur Higgs is here, she's been working on this. I also want to thank Nicole Harper, and just appreciate the work to get us to this point, and really look forward to the exciting work that will happen with this food plan and really the conversations that will be happening. I know we're going to have some in the Linden community, there's lots of communities we're going to be going to, and just look forward to those conversations. And so, with that, President Ginther, you have any comments you want to make? Nope, thank you. With that, I would like to move for passage and call for a voice vote, please.
Craig.
Yes.
Harden.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Mills.
Yes.
Paley.
Yes.
Tyson.
Yes.
President Ginther.
Thank you. Now, I move to authorize the Director of the Department of Finance and Management to enter to a lease agreement with the Reed Avenue Center as the master tenant and to allow for the rental of office and educational space to the nonprofit five oh one C three entities and to manage the day-to-day operation of the building that is city-owned, real property identified as two eighty Reed Avenue, and to declare an emergency. Again, this, we will be the landlord for this building, and of course, Reed Avenue Center will be the master tenant. And the Reed Avenue Center's vision is to create pathways to prosperity and prospective tenants and their services, which will be important, and to executing that vision include the Boys and Girls Club of Columbus, Colwick, Connect Ohio, Goodwill Columbus, and the American Red Cross, also the South Side Learning and Development Center. The Mid-Ohio Food Bank will collaborate with the Community Development for All People, Saint Stevens Community House, and lastly, the Cedar Columbus Pride Center. And I would move for passage and call for a voice vote.
Craig.
Yes.
Harden.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Mills.
Yes.
Paley.
Yes.
Tyson.
Yes.
President Ginther.
Thank you. Now, I move to authorize the Director of the Department of Finance and Management to establish a purchase order with Southeastern Equipment Company Inc. for repairs of an asphalt distributor, to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of forty thousand dollars from the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund, and to declare an emergency. And if there are no comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig, Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Second, I have ordinance twenty-six seventy-five to accept the platet titled Warner Junction, the re-subdivision of lots one through six of Justin Morrison subdivision from Franklinton Development Association by Jim Sweeney, representative, owner, and platted land, and to declare an emergency. And if there are no comments or questions, we move for, I move for passage.
Craig, Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
That is all we have tonight in Public Service and Transportation Committee.
Thank you, Councilmember Harden. Our next committee is the Public Utilities Committee. Councilmember Klein chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Two pieces in utilities tonight, twenty-four forty-four twenty-fourteen, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to participate as a grant match provider for USDA Regional Conservation Partnership Program grant being applied for and administered by the Delaware County Soil and Water Conservation District to research and promote best management practices for phosphorus within the central Ohio watershed, authorize the expenditure of twenty thousand dollars for one year from the Water Operating Fund. Deputy Director Lombardi.
Councilmember Klein, President Ginther, other members of council, this legislation allows the Department of Public Utilities to enter into a grant agreement over the next five years. We have committed twenty thousand dollars per year to this grant. The request this evening is for the first year of that twenty thousand dollars. The result of this project will allow us to assess new technologies that are being developed to address the quality challenges presented to our watersheds because of nutrient runoff, and we are also going to give in-kind help with eighty-seven thousand dollars worth of personnel assistance through our watershed master plan and research, and hopefully they'll use that as a roadmap for those best practices.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lombardi. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Craig, Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Finally, twenty-five twenty-one twenty-fourteen, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to modify and extend an agreement with Kurtz Brothers Central Ohio LLC and the Solid Waste Authority of Central Ohio for the design, construction, and operation of the Organic Waste Recovery and Reuse System Project, and to authorize the expenditure of one million one hundred and forty-six thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars from the Sewage System Operating Fund. Deputy Director.
Councilmember Klein, President Ginther, other members of council, this ordinance is an extension of a contract that was entered into in two thousand and five by the Department of Public Utilities. It is a ten-year contract with Kurtz Brothers and the Solid Waste Authority. They operate, Kurtz Brothers operates a organic waste disposal facility near Burr Liner Park, backed by Jackson Pike Wastewater Treatment Plant, and they accept our fats, oils, and greases, along with sewer sludge and incinerator ash from our two wastewater treatment plants. Those items are also reused for farmland for fertilizers, and this contract is just an extent, extension of that agreement.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments? I move for passage by voice vote.
Craig.
Yes.
Harden.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Mills.
Yes.
Paley.
Yes.
Tyson.
Yes.
President Ginther.
And that's all I have in utilities. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Our next committee is the Development Committee. President Protem Mills chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Two pieces in utilities tonight, twenty-four forty-four twenty-fourteen, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to participate as a grant match provider for USDA Regional Conservation Partnership Program grant being applied for and administered by the Delaware County Soil and Water Conservation District to research and promote best management practices for phosphorus within the central Ohio watershed, authorize the expenditure of twenty thousand dollars for one year from the Water Operating Fund. Deputy Director.
Councilmember Klein, President Ginther, other members of council, this ordinance is an extension of a contract that was entered into in two thousand and five by the Department of Public Utilities. It is a ten-year contract with Kurtz Brothers and the Solid Waste Authority. They operate, Kurtz Brothers operates a organic waste disposal facility near Burr Liner Park, backed by Jackson Pike Wastewater Treatment Plant, and they accept our fats, oils, and greases, along with sewer sludge and incinerator ash from our two wastewater treatment plants. Those items are also reused for farmland for fertilizers, and this contract is just an extent, extension of that agreement.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments? I move for passage by voice vote.
Craig.
Yes.
Harden.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Mills.
Yes.
Paley.
Yes.
Tyson.
Yes.
President Ginther.
And that's all I have in utilities. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Our next committee is the Development Committee. President Protem Mills chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight in development, I have the following ordinances, beginning with ordinance twenty-four fifty-eight dash twenty-fourteen, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to establish a purchase order for the purchase of software platforms associated hardware and training setup costs from Four Winds Interactive to weigh the competitive bidding requirements of the Columbus City Code, to authorize expenditure of twelve thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty cents from the Development Services Fund and to declare an emergency. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig, Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance twenty-seven oh seven dash twenty-fourteen. I'll begin reading the ordinance while I ask Linda Logan and Larry Hefner from the Blue Jackets to begin approaching the podium, please. Of ordinance twenty-seven oh seven twenty-fourteen, to authorize and direct the city auditor to transfer two hundred and fifty thousand within the general fund, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a contract with the Columbus Greater Sports Commission to provide support for the twenty-fifteen NHL All-Star Celebration, to authorize expenditure of two hundred and fifty thousand from the general fund and to declare an emergency. The sixtieth NHL All-Star Game Celebration will be the centerpiece of the twenty-fifteen NHL All-Star Game, being held here in the great city of Columbus, January twenty-second through the twenty-fifth, twenty fifteen, and will feature a variety of hockey-themed events, entertainment, and activities, but certainly the anticipation of twenty-fifteen NHL All-Star Celebration will bring what we all are excited about, an estimated twelve million dollars in visitor spending to central Ohio, coupled with a ten million dollar spend to NHL to actually execute the event. And I'm going to ask Linda Logan to provide some comments related to this ordinance. Linda Logan?
Thanks to all of you for having us here today and for considering this request. We are thrilled to have this once-in-a-generation opportunity to host the NHL All-Star Weekend. We also, we talked about some of the numbers of the visitor spending. Also, we estimate about fifty million dollars worth of media coverage from around the world, and we couldn't be more proud to have the best hockey players in the world in our city for that week, late in January. I know that we've been planning this for many, many years. Many of you in this room have been part of the, the planning already. We're just thrilled to have this opportunity to showcase to the community and to the rest of the country what a great host city we are. I'm going to have Larry talk about some of the ancillary events above and beyond what the NHL is doing.
Thank you. Good evening. I don't know many of you. My name is Larry Hefner. I'm the Executive Vice President of Business Operations for the Blue Jackets. Thank you for having us again this evening. As Linda mentioned, the league will be here in just a little over sixty days for the All-Star Game. It's really a, a four-day celebration of the, of the sport, which will bring tens of thousands of visitors from all over the world to our city. The league has this number of events, including the skills competition at the arena on Saturday night. The All-Star Game itself is at five o'clock on Sunday of All-Star Weekend, which will be televised worldwide, along with Fan Fair at the Convention Center for four days, and a number of other parties and events throughout the weekend from the league and league sponsors. Our challenge from the leadership of the Sports Commission, from our ownership group, and from business leaders was to think big, to make this the best All-Star Game in National Hockey League history and to present Columbus in the finest light that we can. So, to that end, we've been working with Linda and her group, and we will be staging at McPherson Commons and All-Star Winter Park, which will be a celebration of our sport that will make the event accessible and open to the entire community. The centerpiece of All-Star Winter Park will be an outdoor rink that will be open for eleven days, will include a number of public skating sessions, high school hockey, youth hockey, adult hockey, special needs hockey. We're in the middle of programming that rink now. There'll be an entertainment venue at McPherson Commons. There will also be a kids' area, and I think the, the one thing that gets people's eyes to light up the most is that we will be building a three-hundred-foot ice snow slide along Nationwide Boulevard that will be open for four days, that we hope will be, you know, will actually get a lot of press coverage from around the world. Indianapolis, when they had the Super Bowl, had their zip line, which got all the coverage. We're going to do them one better and have a nice slide that will be open, open to the public. There are also some, some charitable events that take place along with the All-Star Game, the most meaningful of which is the NHL Legacy Project, was a partnership between the, the league, the team, McDonald's, and the Columbus Foundation, which will include the construction of a three-story indoor treehouse at Ronald McDonald House that will allow kids and families to enjoy the benefits of outdoors, indoors during the winter months.
Thank you very much. I, I appreciate both of you for coming down. I want to encourage our listening and viewing audience to engage, and it's a time to draw some attention to the sport, to winter activities. I'm excited about the slide. I just want to make sure there's no age restrictions on it, because I like to challenge my colleagues to go down the slide. Blue Jackets deserve, working very hard and representing our great city. So I want to thank them and thank you again for coming down. And I wanted to also bring to bear the point that the dollars being provided through this ordinance is also there to help leverage other support, to continue to make sure that the event is executed, to bring the millions of dollars and the visibility that's being offered through NHL and all of that, including, again, the media exposure, it's close to $50 million with over four hundred regional, national, and international sports and news media covering the event, which is somewhere close to what we would like, always wanting as much more. We're into those triple digits now, double digits, we've gotten spoiled. So glad to see that the two of you had an opportunity to come and share that, but please, if you can hear me, engage, show the support for the sport, and show the love of hockey on behalf of the city of Columbus during that week, and continue to support our team. We appreciate it, and thank you all. We're looking forward to exciting All-Star Celebration. If there are no other comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Harten, Klein Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
President Ginther, I'd like to move to the Environment Committee, if you'll allow me the opportunity. Tonight in Environment, I have the following ordinances, beginning with twenty-six eighty-seven dash twenty-fourteen, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a grant agreement with day companies for brownfield assessment and removal of asbestos-contaminated materials and other hazardous materials for three vacant buildings on North High Street in downtown Columbus pursuant to the Green Columbus Fund, to authorize expenditure of up to $135,990 from Northland and Other Acquisitions Fund and to declare an emergency. If there are no other comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Harten, Klein Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next I have ordinance twenty-six eighty-eight dash twenty-fourteen, to authorize the Director of Department of Development to enter into a grant agreement with Franklinton Development Association to enable brownfield assessment and corrective action on the building at 421 through 425 West State Street and on the adjacent site in the Franklinton area of Columbus pursuant to the Green Columbus Fund, to authorize expenditure of up to $55,000 from the Northland and Other Acquisitions Fund and to declare an emergency. If there are no other comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Harten, Klein Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next I have ordinance twenty-seven zero zero, to authorize the Director of Department of Development to enter into a grant agreement with Advanced Engineering Consultants LLC in order to foster sustainable building renovation through LEED Gold Certification of the office building at 1405 Dublin Road pursuant to the Green Columbus Fund, to authorize expenditure of up to $10,500 from the Northland and Other Acquisitions Fund and to declare an emergency. I wanted to highlight on this particular ordinance, the operating, and not only just the building, in bricks and mortar, green and environmental considerations that AEC brings, their operating, their staff and employees are engaged in operating green beyond just the bricks and mortar. And the firm has been working for over a decade, becoming the largest engineering firms, led by Lisa, and is a highly respected engineering firm with over fifty employees. If there are no other comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Harten, Klein Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, President Protam Mills. Our next committee is the Administration Committee. Councilmember Paley chairs that committee. Madam Chair, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. In the Administration Committee, we have several ordinances this evening. The city of Columbus provides insurance benefits on medical, prescription, drug, dental, vision, life, disability, COBRA, and unemployment. The city also provides wellness, fitness, and occupational safety and health medical services. All of these services are for approximately nine thousand city employees and are administered through contractual relationships, three-to-five-year renewable annually, and are funded in the Employee Benefits Fund of the Human Resources Department. Tonight, there are fourteen pieces of legislation on this evening's agenda covering health insurance, health benefits, consulting, wellness, and occupational safety and health medical services. I'm going to describe some of the ordinances, and then we will move forward with passing them. Ordinance twenty-six thirty-four, two thousand and fourteen, is to make appropriations for funding of the employee insurance programs. As part of this appropriation, an RFP process was initiated this year for the administration of medical and prescription drug services. An RFP review committee was established, and with the assistance from Aon Hewitt Benefits Consulting Proposals were reviewed. Vendors were interviewed, and an analysis was made. The recommendations resulted from this fully vetted process have been approved by the administration. And ordinance twenty-six thirty-nine, two thousand and fourteen, it is to authorize the Human Resources Director to enter into a contract with the United Healthcare as the Medical Insurance Administrator. UHC has demonstrated the ability to manage the city's claim costs, a good track record with the city's health and wellness promotion efforts, and good claims and administrative services for very competitive financially and received first-place ranking by the Insurance Committee. So on ordinance twenty-six thirty-four, two thousand and fourteen, it's to make appropriations for the twelve months ending January thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen, for the funding of the city employee insurance programs and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Harten, Klein Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next I have ordinance twenty-six thirty-eight, two thousand and fourteen, to make appropriations from January first, two thousand and fifteen, through December thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, for the funding of the Unemployment Compensation Program and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Harten, Klein Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next we have ordinance two-six three-nine, two thousand and fourteen, to authorize the Human Resources Director to enter into a contract with United Healthcare Insurance Company and to provide all eligible employees medical insurance coverage from February first, two thousand and fifteen, through January thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen, and to authorize the expenditure of $113,153,083 from the Employee Benefits Fund or so much thereof as may be necessary to pay the cost of said contract and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Harten, Klein Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next I have ordinance two-six four-one, two thousand and fourteen, to authorize the Human Resources Director to modify and extend the contract with United Healthcare Insurance Company to provide all eligible employees COBRA continuation insurance coverage from February first, two thousand and fifteen, through January thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen, and to authorize the expenditure of $10,000 from the Employees Benefits Fund or so much thereof as may be necessary to pay the cost of said contract and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Harten, Klein Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Ordinance two-six four-two, two thousand and fourteen, is to authorize the Human Resources Director to enter into a contract with Catamaran for the prescription drug services. Catamaran received first-place ranking by the Insurance Committee. It has expected average annual savings to the city of $1.9 million. Catamaran has experience with large clients, service transitions, good customer service, and service deliverables. In central Ohio, their other clients include the state of Ohio, L Brands, Franklin County, and finally, one of the contract provisions will allow the CEO to serve as the city's executive sponsor. So on twenty-six forty-two, two thousand and fourteen, is to authorize the Human Resources Director to enter into a contract with Catamaran to provide all eligible employees prescription drug insurance coverage from February first, two thousand and fifteen, through January thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen, and to authorize the expenditure of $32,97,000 from the Employee Benefits Fund or so much thereof as may be necessary to pay the cost of said contract and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Harten, Klein Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Ordinance two-six four-one, two-six four-four, two-six four-five, four-six, four-seven, four-eight, four-nine, five-two, and five-three are all to modify and extend existing contracts for COBRA Dental Vision Service Plan, Dearborn National for Short-Term Disabilities, Consumer Life Tobacco Cessation Services, Health Strides for the Biometric Health Screening Services and Consulting, and Occupational Safety and Health Medical Services. So twenty-six forty-four, two thousand and fourteen, is to authorize Human Resources Director to modify a contract with Delta Dental to provide all eligible employees dental insurance coverage from February first, two thousand and fifteen, through January thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen, and authorize the expenditure of $7,895,762 from the Employee Benefits Fund or so much thereof as may be necessary to pay the cost of said contract and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Harten, Klein Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next I have ordinance two-six four-five, two thousand and fourteen, to authorize the Human Resources Director to modify the contract with Vision Services Plan to provide all eligible employees vision plan administration from February first, two thousand and fifteen, through January thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen, and to authorize the expenditure of $1,018,673 from the Employee Benefits Fund or so much thereof as may be necessary to pay the cost of said contract and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Harten, Klein Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next I have ordinance twenty-six forty-six, two thousand and fourteen, to authorize the Human Resources Director to modify and extend the contract with Dearborn National to provide all eligible employees short-term disability insurance coverage from February first, two thousand and fifteen, through January thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen, and to authorize the expenditure of $2,979,235 from the Employee Benefits Fund or so much thereof as may be necessary to pay the cost of said contract and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Harten, Klein Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next I have twenty-six forty-seven, two thousand and fourteen, to authorize the Human Resources Director to modify and extend the contract with Consumer Life Insurance Company to provide all eligible employees life insurance coverage from February first, two thousand and fifteen, through January thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen, and to authorize the expenditure of $1,200,000 from the Employee Benefits Fund or so much thereof as may be necessary to pay the cost of said contract and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Harten, Klein Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next I have ordinance twenty-six forty-eight, two thousand and fourteen, to authorize the Human Resources Director to modify the contract with Alere Wellbeing to provide all employees and eligible adult dependents tobacco cessation services from February first, two thousand and fifteen, through January thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen, and to authorize the expenditure of $69,375 from the Employee Benefits Fund or so much thereof as may be necessary to pay the cost of said contract and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Harten, Klein Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next I have ordinance twenty-six forty-nine, two thousand and fourteen, to authorize the Human Resources Director to modify and extend the contract with Health Strides Incorporated to provide all employees and eligible adult dependents biometric health screening services from February first, two thousand and fifteen, through January thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen, and to authorize the expenditure of $90,973 from the Employee Benefits Fund or so much thereof as may be necessary to pay the cost of said contract and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Harten, Klein Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
As in the other contracts, a similar RFP process was completed this year for management services of the Front Street Fitness Center. As a result of the process, we have ordinance twenty-six fifty-one, two thousand and fourteen, to authorize the Human Resources Director to enter into a contract with the YMCA of central Ohio to provide employee fitness center management services from February first, two thousand and fifteen, through January thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen, and to authorize the expenditure of up to $40,000 from the Employee Benefits Fund or so much thereof as may be necessary to pay the cost of said contract and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Harten, Klein Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next I have ordinance twenty-six fifty-two, two thousand and fourteen, to authorize the Human Resources Director to modify and extend the existing contract with Aon Hewitt Consulting from February first, two thousand and fifteen, through January thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen, to authorize the expenditure of $175,000 or so much thereof as may be necessary to pay the cost of said contract and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Harten, Klein Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
And finally, I have ordinance twenty-six fifty-three, two thousand and fourteen, to authorize the Director of Human Resources to modify and extend the existing contract with Mount Carmel Occupational Health and Wellness and to provide all eligible employees occupational safety and health medical services from February first, two thousand and fifteen, through February twenty-ninth, two thousand and sixteen, and to authorize the expenditure of $339,935 from the Employee Benefits Fund or so much thereof as may be necessary to pay the cost of said contract and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Harten, Klein Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
I would like to thank Director Christie and Deputy Director Bass for all of their hard work on all of these contracts. That's all I have this evening. President Ginther.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Anything else to come before council this evening? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Clerk call the roll.
Craig Harten, Klein Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
We do have several non-agenda speakers that will take momentarily, and we will reconvene at six-thirty for zoning. Regular meeting number sixty will now come to order. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal? Sir Second, clerk call the roll.
Craig Harten, Klein Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Are there any communications and reports received by the city clerk?
No, there are not.
Any first readings of thirty-day legislation?
No, there are none.
We will now go to the zoning committee. I chair the committee, and all members serve on the committee. This evening, we have two-five-nine-three dash twenty-fourteen, to grant a variance from the provisions of Section 3333.02 AR-12, comma, ARLD, and AR-1, Apartment Residential District Use 3312.21, Landscaping and Screening 3312.25, Maneuvering 3312.29, Parking Space 3333.055, Exception for Single or Two-Family Dwelling 333.09, Area Requirements 3333.16, Fronting on a Public Street 3333.18, Building Lines 3333.23D, Minimum Side Permitted 3333.24 Rear Yard 3333.25, Side or Rear Yard Obstruction, and 3333.255, Perimeter Yard of Columbus City Codes for the property located at 1397 Chambers Road, 43212, to permit the construction of one, two, three, and four unit dwellings with reduced development standards in the AR-1 Apartment Residential District, and to repeal ordinance 1593-dash-2014 passed on July twenty-first, 2014, and to declare an emergency. The applicant is Guy Williams Jr., care of David L. Hodge, Attorney, Smith &amp; Hale LLC, 37 West Broad Street, Suite 460, Columbus, Ohio 43215. The proposed use is mixed residential development with reduced standards. The city department's recommendation is approval. Fifth by Northwest Area Commission recommendation is approval. If there aren't any questions or comments, first I'd ask to move to amend is submitted to the clerk. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Harten, Klein Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Amended is submitted to the clerk. Next asked to amend to emergency. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Harten, Klein Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Amended to emergency, and finally, move for passage. Clerk call the roll. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Harten-Klein Mills Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Passed. Next is 2596-2014, to rezone 4873 Cleveland Avenue 43229, being 0.68 plus or minus acres located at the northwest corner of Cleveland Avenue and Edmonton Road from SR Suburban Residential District to C2 Commercial District. The applicant is Everyday People Ministries, care of Michael A. Moore, Agent, 1599 Denby Drive, Columbus, Ohio 43220. Proposed use is office development. The city department's recommendation is approval. Development Commission recommendation was approval on September 11th, 2014. If there aren't any questions or comments, move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Harten-Klein Mills Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Passed. Next is 2609-2014, to rezone 2960 Cranston Drive 43017, being 15.07 plus or minus acres located on the north side of Cranston Drive, 480 plus or minus feet west of Sawtooth Lane from R Rural AR-12 Apartment Residential and CPD Commercial Plan Development Districts to LAR-1 Limited Apartment Residential District. The applicant is JD NWCC Limited, care of Deanna R. Cook and Jill Tangeman, Attorneys, 52 East Gay Street, Columbus, Ohio 43215. The proposed use is apartment complex and park. The city department's recommendation is approval. Development Commission recommendation was approval on October 9, 2014. I'd like to move to table until December 8th, 2014. It's been seconded. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Harten-Klein Mills Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Table to December 8th. Next, we have 2625-2014, to grant a variance from the provisions of Section 3333.02 AR-12, ARLD, and AR-1. Apartment Residential District use 3312.21, Landscaping and Screening 3312.49, Minimum Number of Parking Spaces Required 3333.09, Area Requirements 3333.16, Fronting 3333.18, Building Lines 3333.25, Side or Rear Yard Obstruction and 3333.255 Perimeter Yard of Columbus City Codes for the property located at 1506 Chesapeake Avenue 43212, to permit the construction of 1, 2, and 4-unit dwellings with reduced development standards in the AR-1 Apartment Residential District, and to repeal ordinance number 1546-2014 passed on July 21st, 2014. The applicant is Metropolitan Holdings, LLC, care of David L. Hodge, Attorney, Smith &amp; Hale, LLC, 37 West Broad Street, Suite 460, Columbus, Ohio 43215. The proposed use is mixed residential development with reduced standards. The city department's recommendation is approval. Fifth by Northwest Area Commission recommended approval. First, if there aren't any questions or comments, would move to request to amend to emergency. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Harten-Klein Mills Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Amended to emergency, and finally, move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Harten-Klein Mills Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Passed. Anything else to come before the zoning committee this evening? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Harten-Klein Mills Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
We stand adjourned.